I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands under God, under God of all, and of liberty and justice for all. Tara, will you call the rolls please?
Anthony Moranti.
Here.
Kim Connor.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
David Hardy.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.
Neil Tolman.
Neil Zuckerman.
Here.
We have the minutes from the December 13 regular monthly meeting. Any questions, additions, deletions, corrections?
So I had one. On page 14, the third sentence says, "He stated the most important thing is that they are decreasing the scale of the house from 6,900 square feet to approximately 1,000 square feet, but that 1,000 number should be 5,800." That's it.
By approximately.
Anyone else? It's up to her. Anyone else? No? Move to adopt the minutes from December 13?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome to the January 17, 2019, meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board. We'll have three public hearings tonight, but we have a couple of issues of old business, SEJE Realty. Our planner has prepared a secret negative declaration and a site plan amended resolution, but before that, entertain any comments any board members have on SEJE Realty? Ron?
Again, having been appeared in the December meeting, he's removed from the proposal, the storage along the rear wall that the board was concerned with, concern at visibility along the line. So the amended plans now have eliminated that, and so this resolution acknowledges that and gives you both a negative declaration and an amended site plan approval to act on tonight.
Glenn, do you?
I have nothing to add to that, but so we've made the, spoke with Ron a couple of times during the week and made the couple of changes that he asked that we make specifically. We removed a photograph that was part of the picture. I guess that's the only thing we did is, and that's done and been submitted today.
Go ahead, Kim.
So the green line, that's what's been removed?
Yeah, this was, this was the fence that we originally proposed, and these things are colored just to highlight the changes from the last time.
Okay. There's no comments? You? I'll entertain a motion to, for the negative declaration.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And Ron has prepared a site plan amended resolution. Motion to adopt?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The second item of old business, Lowry Residence, planner Ron Gaynor has prepared a negative declaration and a resolution of approval. Any comments from the board? No one? Ron?
Yeah, there's really nothing to add. The board's made a site visit. There's been no issues that were identified. Public hearing's been held and closed. Again, no comments to address. So you have standard form resolutions to act on tonight for both the secret declaration and the site plan approval.
Glenn?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for the negative declaration of Lowry Residence, 8 Erie Road.
I'll make that motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the resolution of approval. Motion to adopt?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First public hearing is a continuation of the Taylor-Fritzi 220 South Highland Road Garrison. It was opened last month, December meeting, and was held for continuation. There's an issue of the driveway grade of 20 percent, and there's some discussion legally or otherwise that needs to go to the ZBA for either variance or interpretation. Have we determined which way we're going on that, Steve?
I believe an application has been submitted to the ZBA. We did a completeness hearing on it. I'm not sure what conclusion of that was, whether they set up a public hearing or not. And in the meantime, my office is looking into the issue of whether variance is even necessary in this instance. It may be possible that this board has the authority to waive the, grant exception to something other than the 14 percent required grade for driveways. My office is looking into that. I received a, as the entire board did, a request for such a waiver last week is when I got mine. It's dated January 3, and I'll have an opinion letter for the board on that for next month's meeting. In the meantime, I think the public hearing, which really isn't affected by the issue of the waiver or variance or interpretation, was continued because we're waiting on the 239M referral from the county and input from the fire department.
Fire department, correct.
We've received, I believe, the county's response, and they said it was a local determination. So that leaves, I guess, the fire department, the outstanding issue on the public hearing, and I guess any further comment that there might be from the public.
I hadn't gone past, the fire company's not under compulsion to do anything within 30 days, are they?
They're not.
And so we, could we rightfully assume that they're, they have no issues with it, or should we not assume that?
Well, you can assume it. I don't know if you're right, rightful or not, but they've not written in to complain. You can certainly take that into consideration.
Yeah, they've been provided the original site plan documents, and the referral goes back, I think, a few months, so they've had plenty of opportunity.
Yeah.
And you've seen the board respond, or the fire department respond in other instances where they do have concerns, so can't indicate that they won't respond at all, but it's, it could be some indication that they haven't responded yet.
And the discussion about the conservation board doing permitting, was the discussion of they don't, really shouldn't get into this, or have they raised the issue that they should do permitting because it was in the flood plain?
I don't recall the conservation board issue. Ron, or do you recall that?
Yeah, the, we had, again, we, the planning board had made reference, a referral to conservation board, again, several months ago. The wetlands inspector, Max Garfinkel, had responded to say that if there's any impacts to the adjacent wetlands or water cores, that he would be interested in issuing permits. We had merely directed the applicant's consultant to meet with Max and determine if they had any jurisdiction in the matter, and we've not heard any outcome of that.
Okay. Glenn?
I'd like to, if there's any other public hearing, I'd like to, I would like to comment, but is there any other public that wants to speak? I'd like to address some of the issues that have been just discussed.
Okay. We will open this up to the public on the Taylor-Fritzi public hearing. Anyone here? Sir? Stand up and state your name for the record. You have to come to the mic.
Hello, my name is David North. Thank you for this hearing, and thank you for protecting this town from burden of overdevelopment. I am a Phillips Town resident that is concerned that we do not allow our unique natural environment to become incrementally compromised. I'm here to ask that you do not approve this application for development. To me, this would be one example of marginal, marginal development as there is less and less viable building sites. In, in addition to the issue of the grade for the driveway, is my opinion that a higher standard of land conservation should have been designated for this property as a buffer between adjacent development and the Money Hole Mountain Connector Trail in Fonstock State Park. So thank you for your, for your thoughtful consideration on this matter, and thank you for this board.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Taylor-Fritzi public hearing? Glenn?
This parcel, I think I mentioned this last month, but several, well over 1,000 acres, I don't know how much, but well over 1,000 acres of the state park that surrounds this piece of property was donated to the state by the Osborne family, who decided to reserve two parcels, roughly totaling 30, 35 acres, for two individual homes. One was Earl Osborne's home, which is, which is adjacent parcel to this. The Osborne family created the state park for the people, gave it to the people, and the one thing they reserved is the right to build, to reserve a parcel around one existing house and the right to build one other house. This is one of the other houses. To lasso them into the idea that they are overdeveloping the property, even though this is somebody who succeeded in the ownership, I, I find it disingenuous because the Osbornes created it, and they felt, well, we'll give away 1,000-plus acres and we'll keep 30, and on that 30, we'll only build two houses, and on the 17, where, I mean, we only have two houses, one of which existed, and on the 17 that was vacant, we will limit the buildability of, the building box on that so that virtually 16 acres are, is, is conserved. I disagree strongly with the characteristic that this is creeping development. I think that the responsibility was picked up by the Osborne family first, and their rights to use that land for this very modest development should be honored.
Okay, thank you.
That's, now, I'd like to speak to the, the applicability and, and of the, of the driveway grade and things surrounding, surrounding that. First, based on your recommendation last month, we did make an application for either an interpretation or failing that, I think two interpretations, and failing those interpretations of variance from the grade requirement. As I was filling out the application, I couldn't find a grade requirement except under the subdivision regulations, and I respectfully point out to you that we're not under the subdivision regulations. And why that would be applied to a single-family dwelling and jump out of the zoning law into the subdivision regulations is beyond me. I did look at the powers of the zoning law this morning. In, the zoning board of appeals has granted the powers to, to, to grant that variance, grant a variances, but their powers are limited to the zoning law. There's no mention of the subdivision regulations, there's no mention of the litter law, any law, just the, so, we did make the application. It was considered complete, and, but based on Mr. Rod, the zoning board's attorney, his recommendation, to us, not to the board necessarily, but that we postpone the, or not schedule the public hearing on the application until March, which would give you time to consider what we think is the right approach. First of all, we still think that the zoning, the land development regulations do not apply. This is a single standalone lot. When it was created, it was not a subdivision. It would be a subdivision today, but it was not created as a subdivision under the then definition. The only place that we could find a, a mention of a 14 percent grade was in those subdivision regulations. If you dig a little deeper into that paragraph, you'll find out that those subdivision regulations don't say you have, you can't have a 14 percent drive. They say you, if the planning board must find a 14 percent drive, grade, driveway maximum for each lot, two, two parking spaces. And the building, the driveway permits, we, think about driveway permits. Driveway permits, I'm a little bit off base here, but driveway permit really concern themselves with how you create an entrance to the road. And we got a driveway permit, and that was done, the previous owners got a driveway permit, that was done. The driveway, 14 percent driveway says to two parking spaces. It does not say a 14 percent driveway to the house. We think that, or, maybe I'll say, I think, I'll take, I'll take the credit and I'll get the blame, I suppose, but I, that 14 percent grade, I, I believe that that's part of the idea of a driveway, and what the town was looking for is to get the cars off the road so that in a snowstorm, you didn't have people coming out and parking right by the edge of the road and trying to block the plows and trying to make the maintenance of the road more difficult. So get the cars off the road, out of the way, make sure they do it with a 14 percent grade. Where you go to the rest of your 100 acres or your 17 acres is really up to you. And, and in fact, we have examples of those types of driveways all over town, and some of them are not so old, some of them are actually pretty new. So we don't, first of all, we don't think that the section of the law applies. If the section of the law applies, we don't think that the limitation of 14 percent grade is carried all the way to the house. And there is a section in the law which, which Steve referred to as section 11244, grants the power to waive these regulations to you. And so we're asking you to waive the regulations. There is a specific, it does go on to say, if you read that section 144, it does go on to say, I think it's in 11232A, that you can't grant the waiver for the conditions we're presenting to you unless you find that those, that waiver supports the reasons, the exceptions to that, that rule in 11232B. And if you read those, those conditions in 11232B, we fall into, we have every one of them covered. If, if we have a, if we have a driveway that, by getting, letting us build a steeper driveway, we avoid significant cuts and fills and significant damage to the environment, it's right in there, that you may make a finding to that effect and you may grant the waiver. So we did, we did, we designed a driveway at 14 percent. If significant cuts, we probably will have blasting. We will disturb about 44,000 square feet of property in order to cut that, in order to, to build that driveway of 14 percent grade. We'll have to build retaining walls, we'll change the character of the land, and the repairs that we would have to do, and admittedly need pair, need repairs, our disturbances will be about 16,000 square feet, and that's on already man-made surfaces, or most of it's on already man-made surfaces. So we think it's, we think it's pretty clear that, that it doesn't apply, and we, even if it did apply, we don't think it, we don't think it carries all the way to the house. It simply carries the cars off the road to get out of the ways of the driveway, and if you find otherwise, we respectfully request the waiver, and we have submitted the required letter in order to request that, which Steve referred to a moment ago.
Question I have, Steve, you brought up a discussion about the 20 percent over the length, how, what the length of it, could be 20 percent over a very short distance or mitigate it over a longer distance.
We're on OD roads now. Yeah. That's, that's really different from that. Okay? The, and I'm not going to debate what, what Glenn said as far as that goes. I'll, like I say, I'll get an opinion letter, but, and let me also say that I'm not an engineer, so I'll certainly defer to Ron and, and, you know, wiser folks than myself on that, but it seems to me that, at the end of the day, what's in the best interests of the town and the applicant is to, you know, not require 14 percent per se on this driveway. It's a question of, of how you get there and to what extent you get there. We started out with the idea that perhaps the driveway was grandfathered and that therefore he didn't need to meet any of town code specs. I could not find any legal support for that theory. Maybe grandfathered to the extent that the driveway can remain there as a driveway, but I don't know that you can go and get a building permit with a driveway that doesn't meet town specs. Now, the subdivision regs is the spot where 14 percent grade is what's set forth, but there are other spots in the code, for example, the building permit section, which say that if you want to apply for a driveway, you got to list what the grade is. And it just seems to me, and again, I'm going to look into it, but if, when you're creating lots, the town requires driveways of no greater than 14 percent, why shouldn't all other residential driveways be 14 percent? Why would it be 14 percent in new lots and anything else that's a standalone lot, you can put in whatever grade you want? It just seems counterintuitive to me. And again, I'm not arguing with, with Glenn by any stretch of the imagination. He makes a good case, and I may wind up agreeing with him, by the way. But, you know, driveways, I think, and, and this is, you know, just at first blush, are more than just a way to get off the roadway. You need to be able to get emergency vehicles up to the house to put out fires or to get people out of, that doesn't mean you necessarily have to be at 14 percent, but you can't be at such a grade that it would be, you know, difficult to impossible to do it. So, and there is a waiver section, as, as Glenn points out, the extent of that waiver section, though, is something that we're looking into. It could be that you can just waive the requirements for building within subdivisions, or it could be that it's intended more when you have a plat that's being presented to you, the waiver extends only to showing things on the plat. You don't want to require them to show topography of the back six acres if no building is being proposed there, just spends money and doesn't really get anything done. So we're going to look into that, and like I say, I'm not disagreeing with Glenn. It may be that he's absolutely right, and I write a letter saying Glenn is absolutely right, but, you know, let's, let's put this over until next month. We'll have the research done, we'll lay it out, the report letter, and then the board can, can move forward from there.
Glenn also mentioned, going before, was it ZBA or you said in March?
The public hearing is
Scheduled for March.
Scheduled for March. If we could, and, I mean, certainly if, if we have a positive opinion from our point of view, from Steve, if we could, if we could know that before the March, the first, I guess it's the first Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday in March, if we could know that, where it comes down with regard to the waiver, we could, we've already explained to the, to the board, in fact, their suggestion that we would withdraw the application if the waiver was grantable. If you turn down the waiver and, I don't know, we'd be kind of in trouble, but I want to keep in mind a couple of other things that I guess, as, as I mentioned in my initial comments, the, virtually all of this, virtually all of this driveway, all of this property is, is under conservation easement. Conservation easement, as you know, is being, is being modified to take advantage of the lower house that Mr. Fritzi, Fritzi and Ms. Taylor are, are planning for a slightly, for a larger footprint, thereby reducing the visibility of the house from the park because of its lower profile. They do not allow paving on the property. They might, if there were an alternate, but we don't know that there's any alternate that would serve it well. We do think that we can build a road with, with some drainage on the side that will avoid some of the runoff, and, and the fact is that people drive up there frequently, and, and the road's 20 years old and does have some rutting and stuff like that, but it's not in very, it's, it's not been maintained. This will, it will be maintained and it will be brought back to a good standard and maintain, and we can do some, some things with regard to slowing down the runoff, such as check dams and, and sort of things like that, but we're really kind of in a box here, and I, the one thing I will, I don't, I, Steve didn't want to get into an argument, but the, the fact is, and you can look all over town, that any, any house under 3,000 feet, square feet, goes directly to the building permit, and you can drive all over this town, and you'll see driveways that, that far exceed 14 percent, and in fewer cases, but exceed 20 percent. So we're just asking for the treatment that, with regard to the driveway, that an awful lot of houses have in this town.
So, three comments and requests. One, I do have great empathy for the Fritzis and Taylors because you are trying to live within the means of what you've been given, you purchased, so I do have great empathy. And then, secondly, Glenn, your novel interpretation is really thoughtful, because as I read it, you may be right, maybe the 14 percent only applies to subdivisions, and that, maybe you're right. But what I do know is the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different outcome. I know I'm not insane, so, I don't think I'm insane, and yet I keep asking, and this is, goes back not only to last month, and I just reread our minutes where I stated the exact same thing I'm about to say again, but I'd like a different outcome this time, which is, at some point, we have got to, this board has got to have a viewpoint about what is unsafe. I don't know if 20 percent is unsafe. You guys drove in your Subaru and it's, you seem to get up fine, you and I walked up, and, as I said last month, less fine from our walking, but we made it up. And I don't know, when we went through the Santucci in the same room before you owned it, Kim, 20, 25 percent, I mean, it's pretty steep, and you and I walked it just once, you and I. So where is the point where it's unsafe? And who can give us a viewpoint about what is the threshold? Because sure as I'm sitting here, we're going to have the same conversation with some other house, we're going to have the same exact discussion about what's unsafe, and the answer that disturbance is a bad thing, so let's just accept what it is, is, I think, a crummy argument in favor of unsafe steepness. So I want to find out, and whether it's on our dime, or it's on your dime, or collectively, we need a viewpoint about what is safe. I don't know what that is, but I know that someone can help us figure that out. Is that the fire department? I don't know. Is that a road engineer of some sort? I don't know, but there is some magic number out there that is more, less safe than is acceptable to the community, and we needed to find it.
Hi, Kim, you had to address.
So I was going to say something similar to what Neil had to say, which is that one of the things that happens is we get a bite at things when they come before this board. So that's why this house might have a steep driveway that was built in the 40s, and another house might have a steep driveway that was built in the 70s, you know? That's the way I see it. But my question, other than that, is, I was going to ask Steve, what about steep, are steep slopes legislation, are steep slopes requirements, do they factor into driveway stuff at all?
Yeah, the, the steep slope requirements, in fact, provide that you can grant an exception for building in steep slopes if it's, there's peculiar language, if it's necessary or unavoidable or something like that in regard to driveways. There's a couple other things that can be built in steep slopes as well.
If, if you can demonstrate that the environmental impact by, of granting the exception to build on 20 percent slopes or greater is less than would, would be if you didn't give the waiver, and the example being if the most buildable part of the property is in the very back of the property, and you had to build a long driveway over 20 percent slope rather than to let a building closer to the road be built on a shorter driveway.
It might go even further than that as far as driveways, but you're absolutely right as to the general rule in regard to it. I think it specifically mentions them.
I'm looking at that chart, Glenn, I just, for non-engineer, could you just demonstrate or show the difference between 14 and 20 percent slope? And also how, what's the length of this and, and how much of it's 20% and, or anything over 20%?
Let me just show you this. This is, this is the disturbance that we think we would need to do to get to 14%. And over here on this map, it's 44,000, I think I said 46,000, it's 44,700, uh, as opposed to 16,200 if we just rehabilitated the driveway. No, acres of, square feet of disturbance. Guess I don't have, I don't, I don't have the profile with that. There was one profile. The comparison wasn't there, was it? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Isn't right there?
Yep. I apologize. So. This one line is 20% steeper line and this shallow, more shallow line is 14%.
Over a running distance of how much?
Well, it's, it's percent, so it's, so it would be going up 14 feet, for 100 feet of horizontal distance, you go up 14 or you go up 16. So, it makes a two-foot difference over the course of, how many six, six or difference over the course of?
Over, yeah.
It's a steep driveway. I'm not going to stand here and tell you it's, it's not a steep driveway, but it's in, it's pretty solid driveway, driveway construction. People have driven up and down it all the time, um, and it would take an excessive amount of work to, to bring it down to 14%. It would do damage, um, it would do damage to the property, it would be more visible to put the park. It might require a wetlands permit because it has to extend further towards the road. So.
Well, I think we fully appreciate the amount of disturbance because it, just, at least two of our board members and probably more have already expressed real concern about, I guess, setting a precedent or, um, taking, every, every time somebody comes in, we take another bite, see what we can do. And probably, from my perspective, the majority of the buildables areas in this town are gone and we're going to keep reaching into tougher and tougher parts of town.
Some of the, some of the homes that are built much more recently are built on steeper driveways than that. And some of the, of the homes are built on, on land that you, you would probably be concerned about and they're functioning quite, quite well.
So, we're waiting for a Z B A hearing in March. Do we continue this thing?
Well, the public hearing has been held open as, I mean, it's your decision, of course.
Yeah, right.
The express reason for holding the public hearing open was the 239M referral and to hear from the fire department.
Right.
We got your 239M referral in. We haven't heard from the, you haven't heard from the fire department. I think you could close the public hearing, you know, except for the possibility of you can't obviously require that they reply, a hearing from the fire department, just so that that's part of your record.
Resolution or?
And then other than that, we sort out the issue of the driveway and then any other site issues there might be Ron could take care of for February and we'll see what the deal is. I mean, um, if it turns out you can grant a waiver, uh, you're still going to want to know, is that existing driveway safe for emergency vehicles? It seems to me that would, I mean, you could take other factors into consideration as well, but it seems to me that's kind of the bellwether and, um, it would be nice to know that. There's nothing magical about 14% grade. I mean, under the town code, that's clearly considered safe, but like Neil was saying, is 15% dangerous, is 16, is 17, is it 20, is it 25? I mean, what, what, what is it? I don't know that you need to come to a particular number. It would be helpful if you could, but if you can't, as long as you have fire department and if you can get your E M Ts saying, we can get our fire truck up there, no problem. We can get our ambulance up there, no problem, and say, well, it's safe.
Any other comments from the board? Or Ron? Okay, um, it's a board's pleasure to close the public hearing. Second?
With the exception of the possibility of hearing from the fire company.
Okay.
I'm sorry. The fire company can still submit their referral without the public hearing being open, no?
They, they could, I just, if you're going to close it and you want, held it open before to get that, it seems to me you'd want to hold it with, you know, and then you just close it if you haven't received it in 30 days, just close it altogether.
Well, my, here's my only piece.
But yes, you can consider it even if you close the?
For me, I, I, for me to be able to vote in the affirmative for someone, this, I really feel like I need to hear from the fire department. And so, whether someone's going to go knock on the door down on Route 9 and ask someone to please go look at this thing, that to me feels like a necessary piece because it's for your own safety. I'm, I'm not doing this because I'm trying to be a pain. I'm doing it because I want you to be safe up there and those are the people I can best guess can give us a viewpoint. And if we have to get some third party to go give us a viewpoint because they're too busy, then let's go get that. But I, I, for your own sake and the future tenants or owners, I just think we have to do that.
My question is, that is, does that preclude the need for keeping the public hearing open?
Doesn't sound like he says.
No.
You could still consider it even if you close it. But since you're not going to act till next month anyway, why would you not close public hearing except for receipt of that?
Right. Okay, so we have, we have a motion and we have a second.
I modify my motion to include with the, keeping it open, close, the exception of a fire department.
And we have a, okay, second's corrected. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. For the second public hearing, Kristen Connolly, Route 403 Garrison, seeking site plan approval, single-family residence on a one and a half acres to be served by private well and septic located in R R zone. Meeting was opened in December, held open for continuation this reading, this evening because of wetlands, concern of wetlands on the property and steep slopes and, uh, Ron, any comment?
Again, as you indicate, the public hearing is still open. The, uh, in the interim, I've made contact with the wetlands inspector for the town and just last night, he finally responded, which I provided to the board. He indicates that the applicant with the conservation board previously and that they're prepared to issue a permit for the disturbance planned and the intended location of the sanitary disposal system. Glenn can get into more detail, but the C B is apparently now satisfied.
Okay. Before we get to Glenn, anybody on the board, early question? All right, Glenn.
An early question, I guess, which is that in our note, in the minutes, Steve was going to have an interpretation on, um, building a house in steep slopes. That was in the minutes from last month.
Steve does not have that. I apologize.
Okay.
Well, let's get your run down and I'll go to the audience. Okay. We've worked on the plan, as Ron mentioned, um, we did go to the wetlands, we did go to the wetlands, um, board and we did get a conditional approval that, that there were, there were four conditions imposed on us, which we agreed to. Well, one was to, along the edge of the driveway, we were going to put in check dams so that we would slow any drainage flowing off to the side of the road and down the gutter. We'd intercept the roof drains with an infiltrator before it was let to go in the wetlands. We've done that. With regard, with regard to the drainage on the driveway, we've added to the plan an infiltration trench. That wasn't part of the conservation board's requirement, but we, when we did the one side, it became obvious we had to do something about the other side, so we, so we did that. Four things? We had, we had to do calculations and, and supply a, a letter to the board. We have not given them the letter, but we have done the calculations to demonstrate that the capacity for the stormwater to get into that little bit of wetlands that's blocked off from the rest of the wetlands by the driveway would work. And then the final thing, which we still have to do, is the wetlands board wanted their participation in the, a planting plan for the disturbed slope in front of the property we're building the driveway up and to the right and, and would be disturbing and filling in that area. And they wanted to participate in the, or have Max participate in the design of the, the planting plan and we agreed to that. So, those were the conditions. We've so far fully met two of them. We still owe them a letter on one and we have to sit down with Max and come up with a plan. We would hope that you would approve the plan, uh, conditioned upon a, a, a planting plan being submitted after we work with Max to get that done. You'll recall that during your site visit, Ron asked us to look at moving the driveway, swinging the driveway to the, to the left instead of the right, which kind of, there would have been some reasons to do that, but we, we would have destroyed the only septic area on the lot. And the fact that we've got a, a health department permit, which I gave to Ron this morning, for that septic system is, in my view, it's some evidence that they're, they're satisfied that there's no other alternative because they don't like to go near the wetlands. And we have built in the protection and that was the focus of the conservation board's minutes. We do have, a permit was issued for the driveway in the driveway's location. It was a compromise between getting far enough away from this blind curve on the, to the, for, towards 403. It would have been, somehow we might have been able to do something different had we moved further to, towards 403, but we really needed to maximize that distance for safety purposes. Other than that, that's my whole story.
Okay. I'll open it to public. Any comments on the Connolly property, Route 403 Garrison? No. Ron, you, we didn't get prepared any.
No, again, this is, this is a public hearing on the matter that's been held over. The board is now satisfied and we now understand that the additional enhancements planned of the site plan, you could seek to have me prepare resolutions for the next meeting if you wish.
Steve, any comment? Okay, entertain a motion to ask. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I don't want to be a pain, but I, I'd like to have seen Steve's interpretation on building in steep slopes. So, if, I don't know if that, if we close the public hearing, await that.
Oh, yeah, you could close the public hearing and then, you know, have determination for next. Did you have the minutes handy? Where, where did we? Where did, oh, no, I got the minutes. Where in there did we? I'm trying to find the issue. I'm, I'm sorry, I just overlooked it.
Page 10. Mr. Gainer stated the reason that comment was raised is because he did not believe that was appropriate based on the text of the code. He explained the board was hopeful in obtaining comments from the town attorney in terms of interpretation of that regulation.
That's right. Ron mentioned it in his technical memo. Okay. Well, it's up to the board. You could close it and we can hash out that issue next month or you could hold it open and, uh, we can hash out that issue next month and then close.
The sense of the board?
Our clients are facing, I'm sorry, our clients are facing a, an obligation to close on their contract, which is up in March. I would certainly like to get this, um, this wrapped up and like to get that opinion with regard, if, if, if that's what you've decided to wait for. So, I respectfully request that it be closed. I would like to make, make the point with regard to, um, the building is as far back on the property as we can get. So, if we, if, if, if we have to push back to the level or part of the property, we have to go and get a variance for, for the setback. So, we're, we are, there's no question, this is a constrained lot. Somebody made the comment that it's been sitting vacant for years and that's, that's certainly the reason. But it's also not a small, not, you know, it's not by most standards a, a small lot. It's been sitting there and we're, we've tried to keep away from it as much as possible, but it's, it's simply not possible.
Okay, I'll call again, sense of the board, close public hearing.
I'm happy to close the public hearing and get to these comments.
You said yes? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we need to direct Ron to, uh, draft a secret negative declaration. Motion?
So moved.
Second? And, uh, direct Ron, huh? Vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Direct Ron to draw a resolution of approval. Motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The third public hearing is Gregory Rath, 28 Hudson Way. Applicant seeking site plan approval for partial demolition of existing seven-bedroom residential structure retaining existing chapel area to replace the demolished portion with approximately 3,340 square foot, four-bedroom, one-story addition. With the addition, the existing driveway will be extended around the north side of the structure to the area of the detached garage. Property is located in R C zoning district, consists of 8.6 acres. Mr. Rath?
Thank you, everyone, for coming to the site visit on January 6th. I'm sorry? Okay. January 6th, we had our site survey. Thank you, everyone, for attending. At that time, we went over a bunch of notes, which Ron, uh, provided, noting specifically that we're decreasing the scale of, of the house, uh, in, from two stories to one story, from 6,900 existing square feet to 5,800 square feet, from seven bedrooms to four bedrooms.
Does 6,900 includes the chapel?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Uh, so we're decreasing the scale of the house from two stories to one stories, one story, uh, and deducting the interior space by 1,100 square feet. So, it's becoming substantially smaller. One of the subjects we discussed was line of sight from Route 301. The building proposed is going from two stories to one story, so there'll be a lesser line of sight if, through the woods or through the trees from Route 301. There's no significant topographical change as we're using a footprint that's very similar, which will be noted in, in rev, in the, the new drawings, which we will provide between now and the next meeting. The driveway, as it exists now, uh, we're proposing to connect it to what was the existing driveway that was revised, um, when the property was subdivided around the time of 2005. So, we'll connect to that. On, on or about January 2nd, I provided 12 or 13 pages of drawings, uh, that included the renderings of the property that's proposed for the new design, as well as some topographical maps, uh, surveys of the property that was done previously, uh, at different scales. Again, we will provide those, uh, as 11 by 17s prior to the next meeting, as existing and what is proposed, uh, and also to include, um, disturbance. We have, we have the site plans from 2005, 2006, uh, that Beatty and Watson provided, produced long ago. And for the, um, erosion sediment control, Beatty and Watson's going to help us with that as well, we hope, before, uh, the next meeting. In the renderings that were provided digitally, I wanted to inquire if these satisfy the site plan requirements for colors and finishes. Again, we'll provide those as 11 by 17, but is there anything else that should be provided in that package?
The intent of the comment is to just assure that, uh, all exterior colors and materials are identified on that plan. If that is done on those renderings, they would satisfy.
So, between the renderings showing color and the, and the design drawing showing material, uh, the combination will show both. Okay? We're, we're planning for the next meeting to provide, um, all surveys, erosion sediment We're planning for the next meeting to provide all surveys, erosion sediment, and site disturbance. Is there any, our intent is to comply and begin construction as early as possible. Is there anything else that should be noted for this package?
Well, it was sent to Putnam County. Have we heard back from Putnam County?
We have. It has been approached.
And the North Highland Fire Department?
There's been a response. There's been no response from the fire department.
Okay.
Is that something that we should, that I should look into?
Well, since we sent it out.
Yeah, the referrals been made. If you recognize the, the original subdivision was made some years ago, and we all know the driveway that comes in off of that. While it may need some enhancement, just to repair any depressions and all, it's relatively flat. The area of the expansion, where he's modifying the driveway to lie in front of the house, that's also on very flat grade. So, it may be that they, they don't see a need to comment, but I'll make contact once again verbally, to see if there is any opportunity for them to provide written comments.
Okay. I just want, any questions from the board? Mr. Rass? No? Open it to the public. This is 28 Hudson Way. It's actually a road off of 301, coming up out of the village of Nelsonville. I had to stop and think coming down the road. It no longer comes off of Langate. Question's quite a while ago, but still. But any comments from the public? No. Comments, Steve?
I was not aware. It did come off of Langate, long ago?
Not, not Langate.
Maybe 301.
Right off the, the sharp curve on 301, yeah. It's been blocked off now.
It's right.
Sorry, misspoke.
In that turn is now a 55 mile an hour speed limit, and I would not want to come out of that turn, out of that driveway into that turn.
It's amazing. It's, okay, no comments from the board? Reason to close? Entertain that motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Direct Ron to produce, propose the secret neg deck? Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Direct, our engineer to drop a resolution of approval?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
The final item tonight is old business, Hudson Highlands Reserve, Route 9, and Horton Road. Greg? Greg? Aaron from AKRF, going to lead the discussion on this, tells the current status the application is.
Good evening, everyone. Aaron Warner, AKRF. So, just to recap how we got to this point with the SECRE process for the project. Recall, back in July of last year, the final scope was adopted. Between then and about, I guess, late November, the applicant worked on the draft EIS, submitted a draft, a preliminary draft, to the board. The board, at the last meeting in December, had asked all the consultants to provide comments on completeness of that document against the scope, in accordance with the SECRE regs. We did that. We gave a memo, Ron and AKRF combined comments, around the 21st of December, and then Steve sent in his letter shortly after that. So, we've given the comments on the preliminary draft EIS to the board. Our recommendation is that it be deemed not complete yet, and the applicant is aware of this. They have their, all the comments, and they are working on revising it, and I assume they're going to have it ready for a future meeting, for consideration. So, I don't know, Ron, you wanted to add anything?
No, not at all. The issue before the board is the completeness of the DEIS that's been presented to you. As Aaron indicates, the comments of all consultants are recommending to you that you deem the present version incomplete, that it needs further clarification or expansion in order to satisfactorily address all comments in your original scoping document. Once the document is resubmitted, and you do find it complete, that would then open up the issue of a public comment period, that will, the public comment period very typically includes a public hearing. All of those matters you will set, once you get to the point where there is a document that you will deem complete. So, at some fee, go ahead.
The board, as lead agency, would then issue a notice of completion on the draft EIS. It gets posted to the ENB. That begins the formal public process of reviewing it. Right now, the preliminary draft isn't out for public comment. There's no comment period right now.
Right.
And subsequent versions that come in, if it's deemed complete, that's when the notice of completion can go out. We can move on from there. And if you want, you know, AKRF, we can put together another memo, once we get to that point of what's to come, once you deem the document complete. So, I guess tonight, we were looking to see if the board had any comments to add to what we've already provided, and open for discussion.
Okay. Let's start.
Do you want to start?
Go ahead. I have a list here.
Hey, why don't you go first?
Initially, before we got any comments from Ron or Steve, going through the submission early on, on page six, there was a comment about improvement of Omar, Omar Lane. I just, I was befuddled about what they were contemplating, talking about, improvement of Omar Lane. And when it, on page eight, they're talking about profit and loss regarding the number of horses. And the question that came to my mind is, initially, in my mind, we were talking about a conservation subdivision, and now I see it as a commercial enterprise in connection with the conservation subdivision of residential standalone homes, residential area. On page 22, following, and other pages after that, the horse center becomes, the quote is, "An important addition to town's recreational facilities." For one thing, the size of it has troubled me from the beginning, but I wonder where there was a perceived need for towns' recreational facilities to have something of this size and nature. Page 26 and following is a quote of "a community-oriented operation." And since these homes are, from the beginning, have been termed weekender homes, I'm wondering how much community orientation is in concern, is in mind. Waste management, that's been a big issue, and just reading through the materials just in the last couple of days, about sort of semi-imperious surfaces for water, that's from the animals. We know, we've talked a lot about the solid waste and handling it. I'm also concerned with tales of the wildlife in the area, and how they're going to be impacted by, if there's no controls over the horses being kept in a paddock, I don't know anything about horses, but I know if they get out on the trail through the property, what does that do to other animals that are native to the area, and what does it do to the conservation easement? I don't think these, I haven't seen these being, being answered yet. And I really didn't get into the maps yet, but I'm looking for a map that clarifies to, in my mind, about the disturbed areas of this whole project, so. I have other, other smaller issues, but. Let me see. Well, that's it for me for now, but I got to go back and reread a lot of this, so. Anybody else? Dave?
Well, yeah, I have, I have a couple of things. One of them is.
Light phone?
And one thing is about the test wells that are going to be done, and I was, it said the Clove Creek will, this is not about the wells, but just in general, they say the Clove Creek will not be impacted in any way by the proposed action. But it looks like, you know, on the map, that some of those houses will be accessing that aquifer. So, I don't, I don't know exactly, I'm not technical enough to know exactly what you want to do about that, you know, just to see what's going on, you know, if you're going down into the Clove Creek aquifer. But I thought that at least, if you're going to do three, I think it was three, test wells, that one of them should be just done there, you know? The other thing, it says, it said in here on page five, "There were no threatened endangered species observed, however, the red shoulder, da-da-da-da, and all that," except that I believe, I recall that there was that whole issue with the bats. Two, two different species, or whatever it is, of bats. And I didn't see that thing coming up here. And, let me see, what else I got? Oh, and this is just a question, I guess, but they, they say that this is going to be, that, I want to, let me see. There's one thing on page 13, to, that in order to do something, it'll be okay because they're going to have, they're going to develop LEED platinum-level certified homes. Now, is that true? I mean, I just.
Want an answer to that?
Well, I, yeah.
We'll give you a chance to answer. Sorry, you have a chance to answer later.
Anyway, that, that's my question. Is that really, is that going to be something that's actually going to be done for every house? It's going to be, because that's a pretty big deal. And that would, you know, if true, that could be very helpful, but there's been some, there was something else, which I can't quote to you, but it was about how the energy requirements for those particular homes were going to be more than, something, I can't remember what the comparison was. So, that's one. And then, this, my last one, you'll be happy to know, is there's this thing about the other impact on that 1825 timber frame colonial revival house, and like that, but I never ever saw in any of this, and maybe I'm wrong about this, in any of what we have seen before, that what was going to happen to that, to the house and the timber frame, you know, to the timber frame, what do you call that thing? Stable, or whatever it is?
Talking about barn?
The barn, yeah, thank you. I was missing the word, but that's what it is. So, that barn, you know, it, it was slated to be preserved and so forth, but then there was always a big mushy place where if, if they decided they couldn't use it, if it was going to actually be like, there was some talk about, you know, selling it to somebody, or giving it away, or giving it to the right place, but there were no details about that. And I was just thinking, I was just afraid it would get lost, because it was touted as such a, you know, historical thing. So, that's all I've got for now.
Well, I read through the, the document, and, I'll show you this closer. And I came up with a number of questions that I had regarding Schofield Ridge and public access, and particularly the Equestrian Center. But then I read the AKRF, Ron memorandum, and then I read Steve's supplemental memorandum, and they pretty much covered all of the questions that I had. So, I can ride piggyback on those, and, and that's pretty much where I stand.
Okay. I, I too was really glad to see Ron and Steve's memos and AKRF, I was, they were great. I do have some questions. So, when we were talking about scoping, I mentioned pools, and whether or not there would be pools. There's nothing in here about that. In the discussion of alternatives, there's a suggestion that each house would have a barn if there, if things weren't approved the way that they want. I'm just wondering what kind of outbuildings are expected with these houses? You know, are they, they're each going to have, there'd be the house, there'd be the garage, you know, are there going to be any other, is there any other building going on, on this one acre? I have a question about what kind of, you know, it's been said that this is going to be dressage only, but if you look through, and it talks about, you know, there being a riding school, and, you know, other horses that aren't necessarily horses that belong to the, I, it was, I was under the impression that the people that were going to live in this development were going to be the people whose horses were going to be there. I wasn't under the impression that this was going to be a commercial horse business. So, I'm just wondering if, you know, we were told that it was only going to be dressage, and that dressage meant very expensive horses that couldn't go anywhere, except in very specific places, and if it's, I'm just wondering, you know, is it going to be outlined that this is only going to be dressage? Is there going to be other kind of horse activity, stuff like that? I could, there's a bunch of different things that I could talk about, but I'm not sure that this is, you know, this is exactly the moment to talk about them, because some of it's just, some of this is editorial, like, there's a lot of sort of editorial comment in this document that I don't necessarily agree with, but I don't know that that's, you know, my place to.
Well, the board can, and, you know, the board can, of course, make whatever comments it wants. The applicant, at least theoretically, is going to take the consultant's comments and the comments you make here, and revise the PDEIS accordingly. So, if you have something new and different than the consultant's comments, or there's, you know, something you want to add to it, that, that would be, be helpful. I don't think that you need to vet the document and say, "I disagree with this paragraph," or "I don't like the way that that's written." But it's the, the topics that you want to see addressed, and any deficiencies, whether it's in addressing an issue, or in substantiating claims, that I think is, is what would be helpful now.
So, I'd like to know what a sewage works corporation is. Is that something that's, that the town has to, it says the town has to approve it? Because apparently, the, the septic systems for this development are going to be managed not by the HOA, but by a sewage works corporation. So, I, I'd, is that, I'm wondering if that's normal, if that's sort of standard, if that's something, if that's a new burden on the town to?
Just a project description comment, if you want to enter it for the record. You know, they can clarify in the text next time they send it in.
I noticed that there was a statement that there are no vernal pools on this property. I find that surprising. I guess that's probably close to the end then. Oh, and then the only other thing is, in, in page 85, where it says growth-inducing aspects, the idea that there, that it says the demand on commercial services in the town will be relatively modest, but we haven't really talked about, we, we asked about school impact, and we keep being told that this is going to be weekend development, but, you know, it's our experience, several of us sitting here, we're weekenders before we came to live here permanently. So, I think it's disingenuous to say there won't be any impact on the schools. And I guess that's it for now.
Keep in mind that that school's impact isn't part of the scope that was adopted.
I understand, but I just, you know, it, it, when you say, when you say, "There isn't going to be any impact," you know, it's.
I think it was, that was determined in earlier rounds, and even with the EAF Part Two that preceded the scoping and everything, those issues were touched on then, and the seasonality of the homes and everything. I think that's why it was out of the scope for the EIS. So, it's tough to make a completeness comment on something that's not. So it's tough to make a completeness comment on something that's not in the scope.
Right.
Okay. Basically, my comment at this point in time is more, oops, sorry. My comments right now are more for clarification at this time. Within the areas of the paddock and the arena areas, excuse me, they refer to using a geotextile fabric, which I see is more of a stabilization fabric. I was just wondering if they're looking more of a geotextile membrane to stop leaching into the water system. And I'll forward this to Ron, so he has it also. But I think that might have been a little bit premature in bringing it up now because I know specifications still have to be written, but that was something that jumped out at me.
I'm not going to answer now.
No, no, I'm not looking for an answer. And again, it's more of a technical issue and for clarification.
Neil?
I have two, two, one comment, actually both questions. One, Steve, to amplify Kim's point related to the editorializing, we talk about what could be added for completeness. Is there a procedure for subtraction? So if there are comments, comments put in here that are superfluous to the nature of the environmental impact, e.g., economic solvency of the business, which is not an economic, not an environmental issue, is there a direction that should be taken about making this about the environmental impacts? It's a question.
Well, it's legitimate to question whether comments that are in it are substantiated by the data that backs it up. For example, I remember talking about in the EIS, I think it was the AKRF Gainer memo, comment that this is one of the largest areas for second, second homes in the northeast or something like that, most popular areas. And there really wasn't any, and it may be true. I don't know whether it is or not, but I mean, there was no, there was no data backing that up. So if you want to say that there's a comment in there, which I feel it's not complete for because it lacks data backing up, that's legitimate. But I don't know that you can say, you know, "It's too big." You got to, you got to take out these paragraphs that I feel are surplusage. Because at the end of the day, I mean, you're going to be using it as a tool, the document, to determine whether the identified potential significant environmental impacts have been mitigated to the maximum extent practicable. And if there's some, I don't mean to use the term fluff or anybody, I mean, just surplusage, that you really can't say, "Take it out." I mean, it's the, you know, there's no, that has nothing to do with completeness.
And then, sir, what is your name again?
Aaron Warner.
Aaron, thank you.
Yes.
So this is a question for Ron and/or Aaron. Either or, both of you can answer it. And this is, I suspect, as much for the public as it is for this Board. I raise, and I think many of my colleagues amplified, back when we first made our positive declaration, three major issues, at least I made three major issues. They were, just to use shorthand, ringing of homes around the majority of the pond and the effects in the pond, the size of this facility, the horse facility itself, and then the uniform nature of the homes despite being in a conservation setting. Those are, if I, again, summarize, then we can all be comfortable that that's a fair characterization of what I said before. Could you both give us your views about whether the material in here is incremental, meaning additional, not incremental, meaning marginal, but additional commentary, facts beyond what we've already had shared versus potentially a repackaging of what we've already heard? What is the incremental, meaning additional, content in here to provide substance, support, and/or refutation of those points that we brought up that brought these to be a positive declaration?
As far as I know, the project hasn't changed in its design, although one of our comments was a site plan wasn't included, which would be helpful. The alternative section of the document has pretty detailed site plans of all the different alternatives they consider, but the project itself didn't, they didn't have a site plan of the project in a similar format. It was a CAD drawing with all the topo and the lots. It was pretty nicely done for the alternatives. As far as we know, the project is the same as it's been going through the process. The 25, 26 homes, whatever, 25, I guess, is what they came up with. The Equestrian Center is still in the same spot, still what it is. However, we didn't see plans for it. We asked for that as part of our comments, some elevations, site plan, more detail of that Equestrian Center, renderings would help. It's difficult to make a determination about scale and visual impact, et cetera, when you don't have, when all you have is words and no images. So does that help a little bit?
A little bit, yeah.
Because there is an alternative, I know the alternative section talks about alternative layout of the homes, you know, and things like that. So they are addressing the comments that you brought up, but just in alternatives, not as the proposal.
No, I don't have anything to add. I think if you're looking for more specificity, there's, I think, a few, few sections or areas where they do have some additional detail, and specifically, the alternatives address some of those concerns, and a different size of the Equestrian Center. But there's always more information that you might seek.
Give it to the Board. All right, give it to the applicant if, you know, a lot of the issues that were brought up in the Ron and AKRF memos stating was, issues were incomplete, and I wondered if you wanted to address that or just accept the fact that, or just accept the fact that it is incomplete and needs more work?
Yes, good evening, Rick O'Rourke. Thank you, first of all, for the comprehensive comments that we've received. And as you know, and as has been spelled out by your attorney, we're in a, we're in a process right now. We know that the document has been before you. We have received the comments. Obviously, you've read them, read the draft. And what I would respectfully request is, obviously, you are not going to accept it as complete. We understand that. We have the comments, we have your comments this evening. The only thing I would ask respectfully is that the comments that we received tonight, as part of the record, if we could have those reduced to writing within the next 10 days or so, and then encapsulate these minutes, what was, what has been said, get it to us, and then obviously, we will consider those comments along with those that we have received previously in writing, which of course are from your counsel, as well as your planner, as well as your town consulting engineer. And then pursuant to SECRE, we will proceed from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanted to comment first that we have already been working and addressing a lot of the issues that we receive comments on. That does include a great number of additional figures and exhibits and maps that there's a few people feverishly working on in response to the, to the comments that we received. As far as, you know, Kim, you said you weren't sure if this was the moment. What I would say is we're looking for right now are comments on completeness, whether or not we've addressed all the issues that were outlined in the scope. So there's a difference between completeness comments and substantive comments. What we're trying to do, though, is that even with the substantive comments that were included in the AKRF memo, we're, we're trying to address them now, too. I don't want to wait on them. But we thought, in fact, in talking to Aaron and Chris, that we were going to get the final comments from the Board tonight. We're working on a, trying to get the document revised and submitted for the February meeting. So that, that's our goal, that's our target. So what I'm going to, I'm going to add on to what Rick just said. And if the comments that you have as a Board can be given to Aaron, so that maybe Aaron can classify them as either completeness or substantive as guidance, so that we want to make sure we concentrate on, on the completeness comments first, so that we have the, the document acceptable as complete. But I will also try to address the substantive comments. I also will say that there's a few things that I heard tonight that are already in the document. So when I get your comments, what I will probably do is, and on some of them where it was, well, either completeness or substantive, I will make a notation referring to where that is already in the document. Like, for instance, the bats. The bats are in the document. So I'll just make a note as to where you can find it. So that's, that's what we're looking for. And I'm hoping for, being that we are shooting for that February date, I'm hoping for actually less than 10 days. If we can get it even quicker, I'd appreciate that.
One additional thing, somebody brought up a while ago about responses pointing out the differences between, something about putting the responses in red so it would become clarified.
Oh, everything that I'm doing, I'm doing in, in the markup version of Word. So everything's, you're going to see, it's a track changes. The track changes format of Word. So you're going to see everything that's deleted and added, anything's changed.
Okay. Any other response?
Can I ask a question? I, you know, I wound up with one of those-
Mike.
Sorry.
Dave.
Anyhow, can, can, I was unable to get like a full book, you know, like the whole thing.
You don't get, you didn't get the printed one?
I'm sorry?
With the appendixes and everything.
I mean, you know, there was-
You didn't request a hard copy at the last meeting.
A hard copy. Yeah, yeah, that's what I was trying to do, because the other-
I think we submitted one for each member, didn't we? Not quite.
No.
No, you only submitted for the members who requested it.
That's one.
If I may, and this, this is very important because we want to make sure that every, everyone understands. We, we, my understanding is that Glenn, pursuant to the direction of the Planning Board Chairman, provided the copies and the discs that were requested, and all of that was provided. And then thereafter, there was a request for some additional copies of things, and we, and we did that. And so frankly, I know it's, you've had it since November 29th, and the way it was submitted was pursuant to an understanding that was reached. That was my understanding. That's what I've been told by Glenn, and I think it was based on conversations with Ron. And so we've done that. And all I can ask is that we follow what the secret procedures are, and that is that you have told us you're not accepting it, you've given us your comments. It is our obligation to take your comments as to its adequacy, as to scope and content. We have to go back, we have to correct, and we will do that. And that's, that's where we are. So insofar as the request for the comments from this evening, the comments have been made, we just would need them, and I think that obviously, the regulations and the statute reflect this, just have them in writing. We should, we should have them very shortly from you, and then we will respond. Thank you.
Just to make a clarification for Dave, there was an additional book that had not been picked up. I picked it up. If you want, I'll give it to you. Because some people had trouble opening up the-
I understand.
-on the computer. I didn't have that problem, but looking at the maps and stuff, it's much easier if you have the map in front of you than trying to turn it around on a computer. So you can have the copy I had.
You know, on, on the one that I had, if you, if you don't leave your, the thing up and the computer on and you, you know, make some marks on it, it goes away.
Yeah, you can save it.
So you can't say, you can't save any of your notes on it. So, you know, I'm, I'm willing to go back to like the paper thing, if I can get one.
Okay.
Is there an extra one? Do you need, do you need an extra one? We'll give you an extra one.
No, I have one, I'll give it to you.
You have it? Okay, great, thank you.
Well, and the revised document will be distributed to everyone.
Yeah, right.
There'll be another one coming up. All right.
Okay, the last thing, I guess we vote to declare this DEIS incomplete?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
So just so, did you want to, just each of you that had a comment, put them in writing and, or just rely on the minutes to do that? Or did you want me to do what the applicant suggested and-
Look in our secret there.
Compile them? I think it would be helpful to get each one-
We'll rely on the minutes if that's what you want. I mean, that's fine.
The minutes would be better, and it'll be faster. So just receive them.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but Glenn just asked me, and I'm kind of hard of hearing, he just made a motion. I'm just trying to, what was the motion?
To declare, I think, the EIS incomplete.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
Okay.
Okay. When is starting where the comments begin?
They're going to be included in the minutes.
In the minutes? Okay.
Yeah. Get a little overtime. Is there anything else before the Board? Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Thank you.